I call the December 17, 2019 Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:45 PM. The Chair would entertain a motion for the consideration of claims.
Your Honor, I would make a consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $963,083.71 payroll and liabilities for 12/6 of 2019 in the amount of $212,424.47 for a total of $1,175,508.18.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion about the claims or any questions?
Didn't really have any, Your Honor.
Were any that you wanted to highlight or anything? No?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion passes. Any other business?
I have none, Your Honor.
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay, well adjourned then at 6:46.
I now call the December 17, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Councilman Hancock will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation will be given by Councilman Larson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to serve on the city council, to serve our fellow citizens. Father, we are asking that Thou might watch over and bless us that we might do the right thing, that we might help the citizens. We are thankful for all the blessings that we have. We thank Thee for Thy Son and this coming celebration of his birthday. We say this humbly, name Thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Would the city clerk please conduct roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Corey Rota.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilwoman Schatza from tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Rota and a second by Councilwoman Borders. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I declare quorum is present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the removal of item number nine, fiscal year 18 and 19 audit report.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Larson and a second by Councilwoman Borders. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding any item that is scheduled for public hearing will be given the opportunity to speak during a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on other items may speak now. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, approval of the minutes, December 3, 2019, Regular Council Meeting, approval of the minutes, December 17, 2019, Finance Committee Meeting, approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for December 17, 2019, and approval of the municipal court report for the month of November 2019.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion needed?
Your Honor.
Thank you.
The recommendation from the Finance Committee was for bills to be paid in the amount of $963,083.71 payroll liabilities, December 6, 2019, in the amount of $12,424.47 for a total of $1,175,508.18.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Borders and a second by Councilman Bailey. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Public hearing to consider fireworks permit application for Riverton Rec and Holiday Festival, December 20, 2019, at 7:00 to 8:00 PM at Tonkin Stadium. City Ministers' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. May I counsel before you tonight for your consideration is a fireworks permit application submitted by Mary Axum on behalf of our rec seeking approval to detonate fireworks on December 20 at 7:00 PM at Tonkin in conjunction with the opening of the skating rink, the end of school quarter, and the final weekend of the Holiday Festival. The conditions of the permit applications have been, of the permit application have been completed. The proper fees have been paid. The letter of recommendation from the fire chief has been received and is included in your packet. Permission from the school district has also been provided. Proper notice to the public has been advertised. Mary is in the audience, is in attendance this evening if there are any questions of her. Two different notes that are a little different with this one that as we learn and develop our process. The primary location of the, on the attached map illustrates that the desired location is the southeast corner of the property. It's highlighted, has a little star on it. However, we've also outlined the property and we have asked permission during this to, if something happens or something has to move a little bit, that we be allowed to authorize the property. Obviously, fire department is still there, as is the, are the people lighting the fireworks. The reason that we're doing this is in order to give some flexibility in future considerations. What we intend to do is to suggest that here's, to suggest that the applicant show the desired area, but then allow for a certain amount of movement in case something happens. Why? Because we have, of our process and the way in which we have to do certain things, and there's a public notice and a public hearing and all of this. It's better for us to give some options that we can fall back to as opposed to being selected on one very small piece of land. That way, we can have the conversation and if there's any challenges. Of course, any of those considerations would have to be evaluated by the fire chief and the like prior to. So we have no issue moving that. We're just trying to be a little more flexible to make sure we don't run into any challenges in the future. Based on the information provided through the application process, staff recommends that approval of the fireworks permit and we would be happy to answer any questions.
The Chair would entertain a motion to open public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion. Councilman Hancock has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The public hearing will be conducted, the public hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Seeing no one wanting to speak, the Chair would entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Councilman Rota has the motion. The second is by Councilman Hancock. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the fireworks permit application submitted by our rec and the Holiday Festival.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion. Councilman Hancock has the second. Any further discussion? Yes, Kyle.
Does this, this will be on the 20th and there is a second coming up, isn't it, on New Year's Eve where you can light firecrackers off?
Yes.
Okay.
You are correct.
This is an additional time to that.
And, and I guess some, some other history to this and why the staff is looking for some flexibility. These fireworks were scheduled to be shot at the Holiday Festival and the location wasn't the desired spot and they tried to move it around and by ordinance, we had to keep it right where it was. So they were kind enough to instead of just not shoot the fireworks, to shoot them on the 20th for us. And that would be between 7:00 PM and 8:00 PM. And not everybody can see the map like I can, but it's the far east side of the old swimming pool of the old high school, just east of the South Stadium seats, closest to the old RBA parking lot. So, and the city would like the flexibility to move that around from, from that location clear over to the practice field if needs be and, and including the parking lot to the west. And I'd, I'd really like to see them shot off the lawn in the front, but I probably would lose. So it is, it is nice to have all that information and we appreciate our rec doing that for us. Thanks, Mary.
Your Honor.
Yes, Kyle.
One last question. Is there a requirement by where we can light these off on the 20th or when it's sponsored like this, when we're getting a specific permit?
Yeah, I think if you're asking, now, if you remember back to the fireworks ordinance, we couldn't shoot them off on city property or school property without permission. But the police chief, Tony, has, has taken care of that. They've asked the permission of the school district and school district has given us that, that permission to use that space.
Okay, thank you.
So with that.
Your Honor, I guess what I would just note, this isn't just anybody could set them off there. The, they've got, Flying Phoenix is the only one that can do it. So just in case from your questions, if anybody was thinking, hey, on the 20th, I could go set off fireworks at this location. It's, it's a permit just for them. So I just wanted to make sure there wasn't any confusion from anyone listening, so.
Yeah, this doesn't give anybody any permission to shoot anything on the 20th except for this group.
Okay, thank you.
Mary has to do all the shooting. Everybody, any further discussion? We're all good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Consideration of ordinance number 19-012, third reading and, third and final reading of the Vasco addition de annexation. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number 19-012 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, proposed ordinance number 19-012 on third and final reading. An ordinance de annexing the Vasco addition and land owned by Braid a Living Trust generally described as parcels of land in the southeast quarter, northeast quarter of section 15, Township 1 North, Range 4 East, Wind River Meridian, Fremont County, Wyoming.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 19-012 on third and final reading.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Larson and a second by Councilman Rota. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the city clerk please conduct roll call, please?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Yea.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Yes.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Yes.
Councilman Corey Rota.
Yes.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 12, consideration of ordinance number 19-013, third and final reading for motorized skateboards. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number 19-013 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, proposed ordinance number 19-013 on third and final reading. An ordinance amending Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic to repeal Chapter 10.40, Motorized Skateboards of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 19-013 on third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Hancock and a second by Councilman Bailey. Any discussion? Would the city clerk please conduct roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Corey Rota.
Yes.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Yes.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Aye.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Yes. Motion passes. Consideration of ordinance number 19-014 on second reading, Riverton Municipal Code 17-22, excuse me, Would the city clerk please read ordinance number 19-014 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, proposed ordinance number 19-014 on second reading. An ordinance amending Title 17 zoning to revise Chapter 17.22 Signs, Section 17.22.170 Flags at the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 19-014 on second reading.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Borders.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bailey. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Your Honor.
Oh, excuse me. Kyle.
Does this limit a flag pole to that particular or is it an engineering design that this limits it to? Does it exclude it to 110? Does it exclude it to 60? I mean.
There is no height limit.
There's no specific.
But whatever flag that would be presented would have to pass engineering and have a proper foundation. So if.
Yes, an engineered foundation.
Correct.
But limit would not be.
Well, jump in and help me. The, the ordinance reads to a 50-foot height and then do we need to get a variance above 50? Or, or is it open to any height?
Your Honor.
Yes.
As written, flag poles would be exempted from the height restrictions, so it could go to whatever height. Anything over 50, any flag pole over 15 feet would need an engineered foundation.
And it is carrying an amendment for just American flags and the state of Wyoming flags. Correct.
Your Honor, that's correct. At the December 3 meeting, it was asked that the stipulation be if the flag heights, if the flag pole height exceeds that of the sign height restrictions, then we put, place a restriction that the American flag or the state of Wyoming flags could be the only flags flown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody all right with that? It needs to be pointed out also that we, at points, we're going to fast track this, but this is only on second reading, so third reading will be on the first meeting in January. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Public hearing to consider, consider, for consideration of ordinance number 19-015, first reading, Municipal, Riverton Municipal Code, Chapter 13 dot 14, public, or billing process for public services, 19-017, first reading, Riverton Municipal Code, Chapter 3.18, Water Service System, 19-118, first reading for the, for the Riverton Municipal Code, Chapter 3.20, Service, Sewer Service Systems, 19-119, first reading, Riverton Municipal Code, Chapter 8-12, Garbage Collection and Disposal. Finance Directors, report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before you, you have staff recommendations to amend Riverton Municipal Code Title 13 and Title 8 and specific sections of that code. To provide a little background information, the city hired a utility consultant to review our utility services and council recently passed resolutions approving changes, not only to our rate pricing, but also to our rate structure, which required that staff go back and review our municipal code to make sure that our code is in line with the new structures and the changes. So before you tonight, there's just some simple requests amending the code to reflect some of the changes and then also for some basic housekeeping, house cleaning issues. We are requesting some specific changes, specifically 13.04.110. We are removing that section of the code because that code references base charges for services and with the new rate structure, it's all. for services, and with the new rate structure, it's all included in the resolution and this particular section would no longer apply. We're also requesting updated verbiage on notice requirements and late fees in Chapters 13.08 and 13.20, both in the water and the wastewater code. Specifically, one of the utility rate consultant's recommendations was that our late charge in our code is currently too low, and the consultant found that a late charge fee is assessed for providing lending services, extra billing services, and risk of customers not paying at all or paying late on their bills. The recommendation from the consultant was that they, that we charge a late charge of 10% of the past due bill or a flat rate of $10, whichever is greater. And in the interest of just consistency and ease of, of explaining our late fees to our customers, staff is recommending a flat $10 late charge. The customer service staff provides extra time in producing and mailing notices, making phone calls, sending out other forms of communication to collect on past due bills. And the $10 flat rate is because it costs the same whether we're collecting on a $30 or $40 bill versus a $500 bill. So that's why we're opting to recommend for the flat $10. That change will be effective in both the water and the wastewater sections of the code. And then the second area of change that we're requesting is small. We, in the code, it states that our bills are considered provided to customers based on that they've been delivered via U.S. mail with electronic communication. We do currently offer the email bill options to our customers, and so we wish to include that in the code, that as long as a customer has provided us with a valid email address, that that is considered an appropriate way to notify customers for billing purposes. So those are the recommendations that we have. For the wastewater, uh, the wastewater section of the code, we also had to do a bit of cleanup on the verbiage on the fees and how they're calculated. Um, it was quite hard to understand the way that the current code is written, if you like, it's, it's in your ordinance, but I can read it if you'd like me to. And so we did modify the, the fee section to be simplistic as far as that it is, the sewer fees are, are structured on a cost-to-serve basis and that the fees are, are changed by adoption of the city council by resolution.
Super. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would the city clerk please read Ordinance Number 19-015, 19-017, 19-018, and 19-019 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Ordinance Number 19-015 on first reading. An ordinance amending Title 13 Public Services to revise Chapter 13.04 Billing Procedure for Public Services, repealing Section 13.04.110 Base Charges for Services of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Proposed Ordinance Number 19-017 on first reading. An ordinance amending Title 13 Public Services to revise Chapter 13.08 Water Service System, Section 13.08.440 Notice Requirements and Section 13.08.450 When Due and Payable Late Charges of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Proposed Ordinance Number 19-018 on first reading. An ordinance amending Title 13 Public Services to revise Chapter 13.20 Sewer Service System, Section 13.20.190 Fees Amount, Section 13.20.330 General Statement of Rate Structure, Section 13.20.360 Notice Requirements and Section 13.20.370 When Due and Payable Late Charges of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Proposed Ordinance Number 19-019 on first reading. An ordinance amending Title 9 Health and Safety to revise Chapter 8, excuse me, an ordinance amending Title 8 Health and Safety to revise Chapter 8.12 Garbage Collection and Disposal, Section 8.12.290 Monthly Payment, and Section 8.12.300 Notification of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. I'd like it noted that Kristin and I are getting paid by the word tonight. The chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion. Councilman Bailey, the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. I now, I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion. Where, did you...
Yes, sir.
Second. Councilman Rota has the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. I now declare the public hearing closed. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 19-015 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Hancock has the motion. Uh, Councilman Bailey has the second. Further discussion? All in favor, Councilman Bailey?
I just had one question. So in each of these three ordinances, we put a $10 late fee, but I would assume that's $10 per bill, not $10 per water sewer sanitation?
Your Honor?
Yes.
The ordinances all read $10 per bill.
So, okay.
You obviously don't pay water bills, because they're summed.
No, I, I'm just making sure. That wouldn't be $30, it'd only be $10 if it's late.
Well, it's, it's 10, it's $10 minimum or 10% of the total bill.
No, it's $10 flat now.
Just 10. Just 10 flat.
10 flat.
Oh, I get it cut.
He scratched it off.
Your Honor?
Please.
The ordinance reads specifically, "A late charge of an amount equal to $10 per billing cycle for all services shall be added to the regular monthly charge if not paid before the due date."
Thank you. That's good language. So we're only going to do it on the entire bill, one charge, if you're late. Thank you. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The chair would entertain a, a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 19-017 on first reading.
So moved. Second.
Councilman Hancock has the motion. Councilman Rota has the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 19-018 on first reading.
So moved.
Councilman, Councilwoman Borders has the motion.
Second.
Councilman Larson has the second. Any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I, I realize I should have brought this up on the last one as well, and actually I need to look at it real quick. When it comes to notice, it, it just reads there, or sent through electronic mail to the address provided by the utility user. My only concern with that was, it, I'd, I'd want to have a process whereby they can opt into that being the means they want to use. Otherwise, the way this word, it's worded, it could just be like, okay, as a part of the form they fill out, they give the email address. I'd want to have it clear, this, if they're giving us an email address, they're opting in to receive all their notices at that email address. I wouldn't want it just to be, they provide an email address and we all of a sudden assume that's an email address they're actually checking. I mean, I'll be honest, there's some sites or something that I go to and they ask for an email address. I don't give them an email address, I check regularly depending on what kind of site it is, you know? I, I send them my spam email address because I know they're going to send me unsolicited things. So I, I would think we'd want to make it clear on this in the form, and I guess in the ordinance too, is my point, that it'd have to be an email address that they have designated as the means they want to receive notices from the state, or from the city.
Mia, uh, could you help us on that? Don't they have to actually come in and request to receive electronic billing?
Your Honor, they do. And when we set them up for a utility bill, we give them the option to receive their, their bill by mail, by email, or both. So if they want, they can get it both regular mail and email bill. Um, it says in the event that a property owner wants a utility bill to be sent directly to a renter who has not, oops, sorry, that's the wrong section, I apologize. It says, "The billing for city services and any other notices provided for in this chapter shall be deemed to have been given by the city to the utility user when such notices are placed in the United States mail with postage prepaid and addressed to the utility user as shown in the records of the water utility, or sent through electronic mail to the address provided by the utility user." And we do, we ask them that at the time that they establish an account, or even if they've had an account with us for a period of time and they, they call us or, or stop in and ask it for their bill to be sent via email, that's the time that we recollect the address from them. So I guess it's just by intent, if they're providing us the email address, that it would be a valid email.
I guess, but my concern is I'd want to make sure that they understand that if they're providing us an email and saying they want to opt in to receive their notices there. Do you see my concern? Otherwise, if they're providing an email, it might not be one that they're checking or anything like that. I, I just, I think if you just added that language, that it's an email address that they are designating as the way they want to receive notice from the city of Riverton, that, I just would feel more comfortable with that. And maybe everybody else thinks I'm off base, but I just get asked my email address all the time in a lot of different things, and I am choosy about what email address I give out.
Your Honor, we, we can add that to the ordinance if, if that's what you would like. Sure.
There's a couple of these guys that, uh, must be taking their lead from Mr. Romney and keeping separate email accounts, so, um, I suppose that that's good verbiage. I think, I think you've got it already. If they, you're not going to set them up on electronic billing unless they come in and ask for that.
Right.
So whichever you choose to do, we can change that in second reading or, or however you want to do that.
Okay.
I think that's, that's well taken, uh, and I suppose, you know, there, people may have multiple emails that they would choose to pick one and use that one for their billing, so.
I have six. I'm just saying.
We, we do have the ability to send emails to multiple email addresses also. Give us all of them.
Let's, let's not go there because we don't want to know where they all go. I think that if you, you know, whichever you choose, okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 19-019 on first reading.
So moved.
Councilman Bailey has the motion.
I'll second.
Councilwoman Borders has the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Item number 15, consideration of speed limit sign change on Sunset Boulevard Bus School Zone at Bus Barn. Public Works Directors report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Fremont County School District 25 recently made a request to city staff to establish a school zone on Sunset Drive in the proximity of their operation and bus warehouse facility. It is proposed that the school zone have a speed limit of 20 miles per hour and be enforced when flashing beacons are operating. The beacons are recommended to run during the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. When not flashing, the area's speed limit would default to 30 miles per hour as it is now. The state statute, under Title 31, Article 5, Article 3, addresses speed limits on highways. However, Section 303 of that statute, um, does give authority to, uh, local jurisdictions to establish proper maximum speeds for all streets and highways. So state statute does give you that authority as a local governing body. Our municipal code, as provided in your packet, also gives you that authority. However, there are a couple benchmarks that, um, the code does establish for you as a governing body, and those benchmarks are to avoid capricious and arbitrary speed limits throughout town. That benchmark first is that there's proper, um, engineering and traffic investigation whenever a proposed change is made. The other is that the proposed change is reasonable and safe. After receiving this request, the city engineer, myself, and the chief of police looked at the situation. We looked at the geometry of the road, we examined traffic counts, and also received information from the school district regarding the amount of children that go in that area. As reported in your packet and the numbers provided on a daily basis, there's, um, about 35 children on average in the morning that cross the street to go to a bus stop near that bus barn location, and in the evening, it's anywhere as high as 60 or so. So monthly basis, that's 700 to 1,000 children in that area crossing the road and, and catching their appropriate bus. The other thing to make note of is Sunset Drive is one of our higher trafficked collectors in the town of Riverton. The 2016 traffic study conducted by YDOT showed 5,475 vehicles moving east from Broadway and 5,577 vehicles moving west from federal. So that's a high number of vehicles in an area where there are a high number of children in the morning and the evening. After looking at the, the geometry of the road, considering those engineering benchmarks, considering the traffic benchmarks, and then also the reasonable and safe benchmarks, city staff concurs with the school district in recommending that the traffic limit be changed in this area and a school zone be established when flashing beacons are present and operating. Fremont County School District 25 is proposing to cost share any costs related to this change. They're being very generous in this in that they will pay for the flashing beacons, the solar panels, the batteries, the timers, and the installation of electrical components associated with this sign change. The city of Riverton thereafter will be responsible to install posts and signs. We do have the budget appropriate for the installation of those signs, and again, city staff does recommend that the council take action and establish a school zone in this area and have the speed limit at 20 when the flashing beacons are operating.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, excuse me, I apologize, Your, Your Honor. We do have Tracy from the school zone here, um, if you do have questions as well.
Tracy, do you have anything you'd like to add?
What's that?
Pretty much covered it all.
I said school zone.
He's good at that.
School district.
So the chair would entertain a motion to establish a school zone on Sunset Drive from the Rails to Trails Crossing to, uh, Westview Drive when beacons are flashing to reduce the speed limit to 20 miles per hour.
So moved. Second.
Councilman Rota has the motion. Councilman Bailey has a, has the second. Any further discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I guess... So we're doing this, we're not doing this as a resol, resolution, we're just declaring it. And I guess that's the language in our ordinance, but it's, I, I mean, any thought about having this as a resolution or something, or we feel pretty comfortable with that, Tony, just saying, "We have determined on the basis of engineering and traffic that that should be the speed limit and that's all we have to do?"
Your Honor?
Yes.
At this point, I'm relatively confident that that gets us, based on the verbiage that is present, that council has heard that there is, there's been the research done, the consideration done, that the traffic, that the, that the impact to the area with the kids is there and at the different times, and that apparatus has been provided. I believe that gets us down the road. So I'm comfortable with it at this point.
Okay.
We also have the input from the police chief, and he's in concurrence.
Your Honor, that is correct.
And we have, we have engineering that's, so, school's on board, so I, I think we're all right, we don't need to go any further than that. Um, Tim, did you want to make a, a motion or an alter?
No, no, I just, I, it's just a little bit different, you know? Usually if we're going to be making a decision like this where we're just having a motion and a second, that's something that's kind of directing city staff or something like that. That's the only reason I was, I was questioning it at all, is this isn't like, okay, we're giving direction to city staff, although it is. I mean, we're saying, hey, go put up some signs. But it is, you know, specifically, we're supposed to be declaring that this is, uh... is, you know, specifically, we're supposed to be declaring that this is, this is something where we need to have a change to make it reasonable and safe under the conditions, which I agree with the conclusion completely. I just was, it's just a little bit different for us, you know? To just be saying, we say this. So that's why I was curious about whether a resolution would be the best move or not. I'm fine with it if you're comfortable with it, Tony, but I just was asking.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Say nay. Motion passes. Resolution number 1404, industrial revenue, City Administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have before you, again, a discussion on industrial development revenue bonds. At the previous council meetings, staff was directed to not only research, but ultimately to bring forward a resolution that set up some of the application standards. And we want to be very clear about this. The items that you have before you on the resolution 1404 have to do with application standards. And so what this means is that any individual that, or group, that wishes to be considered for the issuance of industrial development revenue bonds through the city for a project would have to make a formal application to the city and would have to provide the information contained within the resolution in front of you. It's a relatively extensive one, so I won't go through it in depth. However, Section 3, let me make sure I get to that real quick, sorry, is specifically deals with the application financial information, which is going to be at the crux of a lot of our discussion. This is assuming that it's an established business. So if somebody built, we talk about Weatherby a lot. Weatherby is an established business with an established product. So you would start having conversations more in turn, associated, sorry, associated with the financials of the project to make sure it's, meets any standards or meets any litmus test that you would have in place so council could consider it. The items listed here are those through which council would automatically receive. So, for instance, items such as sales, gross profits, net incomes, cash flow, any potential litigation, things that you would usually see when, when considering supporting an endeavor like this. This, one of the things this resolution also does is provide counsel, we've changed a couple things from the original format, but we made sure to keep the fact and even expound on the fact that council has the ability to ask for additional items. We understand when we wrote this, just like many of the other documents that we see, that we can't predict everything. If we try to be too rigid, we're going to miss something and we won't be able to consider it. Because council is the body that is issuing these bonds, that is giving consideration, they have the sole authority to ask for whatever else they want. So if something comes along, say, a cutting-edge product or something, council may ask for items that make sure that that's a, that's a wise investment, because at some level, that's what this is similar to as an investment. It's for the benefit of the community and the development of our community. But council now has the ability to ask for those additional items if they so choose. They also have the ability to waive certain items, because there might be some, there may be something that does not apply. And so we wanted to give council that sole authority. Once, anytime that this would, this would come up, the application would first come through staff. All of the information that you have there would be, would be compiled. It would not be sent to council, generally speaking, until that information is provided. So once that information is provided and reviewed, you would then receive a recommendation from staff to, for consideration or for denial, or even to ask for additional information. And there would be, of course, an explanation attached to that. If directed to go forward at that time, we would likely also have an agreement with the applicant for payment of associated fees for bond counsel. Now, commonly, bond counsel is also paid for through the bonding process. That is something that they have, that's how they sometimes collect their fees, and we understand that. However, making sure that that is agreed upon in advance is important. So that would have to be developed. And finally, once that was through, we would approve that, assuming it's a favorable item, would approve it and move through the bonding process. That is a separate process, not, not separate, but this is where you consider it. The actual process and the public hearings associated with this process are not contained within this. The only thing that this does is deals with the application process, not the actual issuance. It also, this resolution doesn't, is not meant to provide for any standards by which council is required, or if you meet this threshold, then we're going to issue something. That's not what happens. It is, it remains at council's sole discretion. With that, I tried to give a 30,000-foot view of some of the highlights of this. We would hope that, if you have any questions, please let us know. The nice part about this being a resolution is if we find something that is wrong, it does not take three readings to change it. It's a single resolution change. We understand that there are going to be some changes and some learning through this process. It's new to all of us. So we will have to, we will have to be a little bit flexible as we, when we finally see one of these. But we plan to communicate that to council in detail as we go through, so everybody learns at the same time. Your Honor, with that, I have nothing else, and we do recommend approval of Resolution 1404.
Thank you. Any questions? I have one. The application fee, would that come in when you very first ask for, for the city to, to take action, to start at that point, the $1,000? Or are you going to wait until that second step, when it's already come to council?
Your Honor, that's the fir, that's right out the gate. In, in part of the application fee, and it is set at $1,000, it is not, it is meant, you're talking about, the conversations we've had are between 30 and 40 million dollars. We want to make sure that when council, the amount of time it's going to take staff to even start waiting through this, that doesn't actually even touch in terms of, just probably by the time we're through, just our attorney time. So that comes in at the very beginning, and it's meant to weed out the, well, let me just try, there's no harm in trying. Well, you, you have to have everything together because it's going to take a lot of work on the, on behalf of the city just to keep it moving. There are other ways, not to get too far into the weeds on it, there are other ways that I've looked at how that can be done. You can apply it to a larger amount, so say $5,000, but make that against future paid for or reimbursed at, at the bonding time. It would-
Issued bonds.
Issued bonds. So there are options, and we can look at that going down the road. At this point, the $1,000 seems like it's, it's a, it's a, it's a fine fee for right now. I don't expect that we're going to have a mad rush for individuals to get into this level of bonding and scrutiny right out the gate, but we do want to make sure it's, it's there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Would the city clerk please read Resolution number 1404 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Resolution number 1404, a resolution defining City of Riverton, Wyoming policy concerning industrial development revenue bonding.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution number 1404.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Borders and a second by Councilman Hancock. Any further discussion?
I don't know if this is the best time to bring up typos, but I just wanted, in severability, it's Section 10, it says the reminding paragraphs, that should be the remaining paragraphs. And then 3A, it says, "A complete list of assets and the estimated life of such assets," I imagine that meant, that's meant to say, "and the estimated life of such assets." That was it.
It was all spelled good for me.
Your Honor, if, if we got through that with only two, I'm really, really happy.
There was another one, but I, it wasn't that important.
You should have seen it if I spelled it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Consideration of lease agreement with SkyWest. Public Works, Public Works Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, and while we're on the subject of mistakes, I realize that I introduced Tracy Shepherdson as being from the school zone. I think it's more appropriate to say he's with the school district and appropriately represent the work that he does. With that being said, the lease before you is related to SkyWest Airlines operating out of Riverton Regional Airport. They will commence operations, as you know, January 12th, 2020. Prior to their operation, they do need to have a legal lease with us for the space that they will occupy and impact at the airfield and at the terminal. Staff has worked with SkyWest to establish this lease. It is very similar to the other leases that we have at the terminal for other tenants, so it's consistent and fair. However, we have worked with their legal counsel. Our legal, legal counsel has reviewed this lease, and I'm very comfortable with what's being presented to you today. To be specific, this lease allows for the use of 168 square feet of ticket counter area, 290 square feet of office area, 740 square feet of baggage makeup, 772 square feet of baggage claim, and 1,470 feet of gate holding area. Due to the transition of Denver Air Connection from the terminal and the arrival of SkyWest, it's appropriate that I believe we waive the first month of rental fees for the ticket counter office baggage claim and baggage makeup area of the terminal. The reason for this is SkyWest will not have exclusive use of many of those areas. While Denver Air Connection will have their last flight on January 11th, there will be a demobilization timeframe, and I think to be fair to the new lessy, we should waive those fees associated with the terminal. That being said, I do not think we should waive the landing fees that are associated with this lease, nor the, the gate holding area fees. As we talk about that, we'll go into the budget impact. The ticket counter office areas, baggage claim, and baggage makeup areas are being charged at $17.50 per square foot. That is consistent with what we charge for the terminal square foot areas. Landing fees, as you know, is variable based on the number of landings that occur at the airfield. And the way we've set up the gate holding area is $1 per passenger, non-revenue and revenue, that is enplaned by SkyWest. So again, another variable number. We do think that those fees are appropriate while the other fees are waived for that first month. With that being said, staff does recommend that the city council execute this lease and then waive the first month of lease fees associated with those areas already mentioned. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. The Chair would, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the lease agreement with SkyWest Airlines, Inc. for a terminal lease space at the Riverton Regional Airport.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion. Councilman Hancock has the second. Any further discussion? Councilman Bailey.
Yes, Your Honor. Kyle, I have a question. On the lease, is it a calendar month lease or a, from starting January 12th? So would we be just waiving January 12th through the end of the month, or would we be waiving January 12th through February 11th?
Your Honor, Councilman, the lease is for the full month, and so rather than trying to prorate those fees from when Denver Air Connection actually leaves the space and when SkyWest occupies the space, we would prefer just to waive the full, the full month since it is set up on a monthly basis.
So, so we would be waiving January 12th through the end of January?
Correct. However, let me pull up the lease.
It says from the first day of January.
Correct. So for clarification, the lease begins the first day of the month.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Tim?
And this lease is, I guess, initially, it's just going to be six months until June, and then from there, we could do, we'd do 12 months, so that it would be running along with the fiscal year is the idea there, right?
Your Honor, Councilman, that is correct. We like to have all of our leases have similar expiration dates, and matching it with the fiscal year makes the most sense.
Good idea.
And we can also, the, the lease amount could be increased depending, I was just looking at rental 3A, that'd take a resolution of the city council, and we'd have to discuss that, but it would be up to a maximum of 2% per year. Have we ever done that so far with our, our other, with the lease with Denver Air?
Your Honor, Councilman, most of the leases we have at the airport have a CPI adjustment clause in them.
Just was curious. Thank you. That's all I had, Your Honor.
They have, they have the clause, but we've never, or do we yearly put it on? Is a, yeah, we do.
Your Honor, Mia works very hard on that and gets that done for us.
We do adjust it.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Public hearing to consider ordinance number 19-016, first reading franchise agreement with High Plains Power. City Administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We get to do something a little rare now. Franchise agreements exist between the city and utility providers, communication companies and the like, but they happen about every 10 years or so. So they don't tend to happen a whole, a great deal. The item that you have before you tonight, ordinance number 19016, is between the city and High Plains Power and is for a proposed term of 10 years. The items within it that are of usual consequence usually tend to be with term and rate. In this case, the rate is not proposed to change from the 5%, which is within the normal standard and is what the previous agreement held as well. Sections 1 and 2 of the agreement moved it from a five-year term, which is relatively short in terms of franchise agreements. The, the reason for that is there's a great deal of investment on behalf of the organization working in the right of way, laying cable, laying line. So 10-year agreements are not at all abnormal and tend to be sometimes towards the shorter end. So we have no issue, that was an item that was requested, and we were fine with it being 10-year. Additionally, instead of having large renewal items, it actually goes into one year after that. And what the reason for that is, instead of running in five and a 10 years, to make sure that we do start giving some sort of trigger to bring us back to the table and have a discussion. Why? So we can keep, so we can keep the discussion going. This particular discussion was relatively easy and relatively quick. That happens a little bit more in my experience with power provision as opposed to communications, because it seems to be a little less complicated. Sections, Section 3.08 is a modification, and it denotes that it is not allowed to, while it is implied usually, it is also pointed out very clearly in this one, that we are not authorizing attachment for other companies to said line if those companies do not have an already existing agreement with the city. What does that mean? If a company, a communication company wants to attach to their poles, they can execute an agreement with them, in so long as they already have a franchise agreement with the city. That actually works out really well and is, can be beneficial to almost everybody involved. But it's not meant to allow for a sidestepping of the agreements that are required generally. Additionally, 5.03 allows for the city to attach emergency communication equipment to the High Plains Power poles. There was some additional modification that is included in here that denotes that as long as, it's fine as long as there's power already there. If for some reason we attempt or, or request to attach to a pole that doesn't have power, we are responsible for, of course, that power, which seems reasonable because we're the ones putting it on there. And then, as pointed out here, we did remove a section of the previous ordinance that had to do with an emergency provision. I'll be honest, the way it was passed, I don't know why it existed there to begin with, but we did just remove that. That was a housekeeping item. As such, most of this has been unchanged. Most of the verbiage was pretty solid to begin with, and that's, that's really nice to know, that we didn't have to make tons and tons of changes. Having an already existing one tends to help. I would point out that a High Plains Power representative is here, Marlene, and I'm very appreciative of all the work that she did. We got on the phone, we worked through a couple drafts, everybody reviewed it in very short order, and here we are. So probably one of the quicker ones I've ever been, had the pleasure of being part of, but it was very good. So there, she is here if there's any questions. And she, and they have reviewed this through their legal counsel, and we have also done the review. As such, we recommend approval of the ordinance on first reading and would stand for any questions.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number 19-016 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 19-016 on first reading. An ordinance granting to High Plains Power, Wyoming Corporation. An ordinance granting to High Plains Power, Wyoming Corporation, its successors and assigns a non-exclusive right and franchise to construct, maintain, and operate along across and under the present and future streets, alleys, public places, and waves of the city of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming. An electric light and power system for the purpose of supplying electricity and electric service to the city of Riverton, the inhabitants thereof, and others, subject to the terms and conditions and to the making of payments specified in the ordinance. A repealing enrolled ordinance number five dash zero zero four of the city of Riverton, passed and adopted on March fifteenth, two thousand and five.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion. Councilman Rota has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion pass. I now declare public hearing open. The public hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Seeing none, the Chair would make, would entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Rota has the motion. Councilman Bailey has the second. Further discussion? Tim, you all right? You were reading pretty hard there. You got one?
Yeah, but this is just closing the public hearing. I'm good.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion pass. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number nineteen dash zero one six on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Larson has the, has the motion, second. Do we have a second? Corey, thank you. Councilman Rota has the second. Now, further discussion?
No.
No? Okay.
Well, that build, I don't know what reading hard entails. That's good. I mean, I have to.
Well, some of us have to read harder than others, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Who had the, who had the time?
We didn't.
We didn't.
Nobody yet.
All right, here we go. I appreciate that. We're now down to reports and comments.
Your Honor, excuse me. I apologize for the interruption. One of the items that just got brought to our attention is on the lease fee waiver. The original motion, when we did the lease for the airport, at the airport, did not include the waiver. Is that something we probably needed that motion to waive that first month lease?
Okay. So you want us to go back and dance on that just a little?
Yes, sir.
So that takes us back to item seventeen, consideration of lease agreement, Sky West, and you want an amendment attached there?
Your Honor, I believe just a new motion that waives the fees for those specific areas for the month of January twenty twenty would be appropriate.
So the Chair would ask for a motion to approve the waiving of the first month's fees?
Your Honor, I would move that we waive the first month of lease fees associated with the ticket counter, the office, the baggage claim, and the baggage makeup areas of the terminal for January twenty twenty for Sky West Airlines.
Thank you.
Second.
So Councilman Hancock has his motion, and Councilwoman Borders has the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Carla, could you start us off tonight?
Sure. One thing I definitely want to mention, I've been busy going to all sorts of meetings the last couple weeks, but one of the most important is the local food exchange, the Airport Cafe. I just want to let everyone know, their new hours, they're now open on Sunday. So Monday to Friday, they're open from six to two, and Saturday and Sunday from nine to three. They've got some really good food up there, really good service, so I encourage everybody to go up there. Another push for the food hub, we're in need of members. So if you want more information, you can go to rivertonlocalfoodhub.com. You can find out all about the movement, what's happening, how you can sign up. Of course, we need more members all the time, so I did attend Solutions, and I'm going to let Tim fill you in on that.
I always talk about it.
Divert to Tim.
I've talked enough.
Could you give us ours again on the airport?
Absolutely. Monday through Friday, six to two. Saturday and Sunday, nine to three. And they are working on, I don't know exactly where they are in the process, but they're working on a kiosk that's close to where the passengers load and unload, so maybe they can help, you know, with some signage, maybe moving some people over that way. But they'll have a few items available there at that kiosk as well.
I'm a slow rider. Sunday, Saturday and Sunday was.
Nine to three.
Nine to three. Thank you.
Um, oh, just wanted to report on the Festival of Trees. It went really good. There was an awesome tree that Teton Athletic Club did, and they, the person who purchased it donated the tree to the police department, and it's beautiful. So I just wanted to make that little plug. It was really neat. I got to see the captain there, and, and, not the captain, the chief and the captain. Sorry about that. And it was just a really neat experience. The tree was beautiful. It was called Back the Blue, so everything was about backing our police, which I think is just amazing, so.
And the tree is now in the Riverton Police Department.
It sure is. I think that's about all I have for tonight.
It was in Weekly also, so gorgeous tree, yeah. Thank you for all your work there.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Councilman Hancock.
I just had to pause for a minute to make everybody think of like the last council meeting, when every time I talked, you had to wait for ten seconds before it would start. It was really funny when I was trying to make motions, and by the time I'd make the motion, I think it was already voted on. So, anyway. So I guess what I'll, two things I'll report on. First off, we had a scheduled meeting with the Senior Citizen Endowment Board last Wednesday that we didn't have, so we're actually going to have that this Wednesday. I, I don't know that there's very much to report on that. We'll hopefully have some more to report on that in January. For Solutions Committee, we talked a lot about the Good Samaritan Center, and I don't think this will be a surprise to anybody that reads County Ten or Wind River Network, radio network. But the Good Samaritan Center, they have already voted, the board has voted to basically dissolve. Not right now dissolving completely, but they're closing down the center with an eye towards having requests for proposal from nonprofits that want to continue the center. So in other words, the idea is they're not going to be doing it any longer, but if somebody else wants to carry the torch in their section five oh, five oh one C, thank you. I was going to say five oh three, but anyway, that they would have to get a request, a proposal to them, letting them know that they're willing to take on the property, take on the assets, that sort of thing, and willing to continue providing that service. It's really too bad, and we discussed a lot about just what that means for the community. We have some good services in the community in the form of the Volunteers of America, Eagles Hope Transitional Center. But when it comes down to it, somebody that just needs to have a place to stay temporarily, this is really what we had. And it's difficult to keep something like that running when you have very old infrastructure that you're working with. They've struggled for years, I think, with the grants that they've had. The grants that they were funded through have changed over the years. There's been, I guess, efforts from other government agencies to try to discourage, maybe to a certain extent, this sort of just having a temporary place to stay and more encourage a different solution. And so they've been struggling with that grant for years, but the reality is, just the way things were, they weren't getting the money they needed to run the center. And they needed to have quite an influx of money to be able to continue to use the buildings that they have, and, and that just didn't materialize. So that's the status of that. We discussed that in Solutions. Hopefully, somebody's willing to take that up. A group at a five oh one C three is willing to take that up. I appreciate it to help with that, by the way. So. We also discussed a Travelers Aid Fund. We have sometimes people that end up coming here for one reason or the other, and they, they want to get out of here, or they're stranded here or something. And, and so we discussed that a little bit, trying to look forward to some solutions for that. We also discussed efforts we've been making towards getting a residential treatment facility here. Right now, one of the biggest things that we think could be a solution is just to have residential treatment available in the Fremont County Detention Center. But I think, as everybody knows, from also reading the newspapers and reading the news, there's not a lot of room in the Fremont County Detention Center for anything, let alone space for classes and that kind of thing with residential treatment. So we're trying to get some discussions going for that, discussions going for a separate building. Hopefully, our next meeting, we're going to have Lloyd Larson there. Can we discuss some things with him in terms of state funding? We're excited that when we were talking to him, that he didn't just immediately say, there's no way the state can fund any of this. That's not, of course, a promise that they will, but we'll see what he has to say about it. We're still trying to kind of finalize, I guess, what that would look like and what we would have in a residential treatment facility. So. Anyway, that's all the stuff from Solutions. It was a pretty productive meeting, and really, though, a pretty frustrating situation to be in with losing the Good Samaritan Center, but hopefully this can just be a way that we can come back and still have those services provided down the road. So, that's it.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. Again, the Force Committee did not meet this month. I think we're at a point where we're doing calculations for the upcoming projects for next spring, and so that'll be coming here in a month or two. And then Airport Board meets this Friday, so we haven't had an Airport Board meeting for a little while. I did have the opportunity. I had to fly to Denver for a meeting, so I flew down one morning and back that night. And the airplane was full both directions, and more people got on in Riverton that were already on from Sheridan that morning, so that was also really cool. So I think, you know, people are using the airport more often, and I guess I'm really looking forward to see the improvements that we'll have when Sky West takes over with a little bigger plane. And so, so I think we have a lot of opportunities for growth at the airport. And from what it looks like, the, the ticket prices are very competitive from what we're looking, seeing moving forward. So I think we got great things coming at the airport, and so I think things are improving along. And again, I think, you know, the Fast Committee and all of the people with city staff and all that need some real kudos for, you know, the work they've put in over the last few years, really turning that airport around in that situation. So I mean, I'm really, you know, proud to see that really improve. And again, I also attended the Festival of Trees, and again, it's just always impressive to attend these things in Riverton and Fremont County and see the generosity of the people of this community in supporting the, you know, the needy organizations and people in our community. And so, you know, I have faith that we will, you know, do a good job taking care of our own and the people that need help, and the people that are, you know, less fortunate than the rest of us. And so it's, it's always cool to see those events be successful and them raise money for a great cause, and that happens a lot around here. And I think sometimes we even almost expect it, and when you visit with people from other areas, it's not always that way in other communities. So I think we have a lot to be proud of there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Kyle?
I think we need to say kudos to Kyle and the street crews for the way the main street is looking. Lights, last Friday, they blocked off certain areas rapidly and moved traffic appropriately, and as far as I know, there was no problems in any of the situation there, which was professional and well done. The second thing I have is I attended the, I call it the garbage meeting, but it's, it's not, that's not appropriate. But anyway.
Fremont County Solid Waste.
Solid Waste, thank you, Mayor. We've got several solid waste districts, one, but I mean, we've got solid waste receptacles. We've got one in Shoshone, we've got one in DuBois, one in Riverton, or out on the close, one in Lander. And what I learned there was space, the ability to compact garbage, and that's, that's not very exciting, except the more you compact it, the more you save, because you don't have to put that dump to bed. And, but interesting enough, the amount of solid waste that we put in Lander changed the death date from two thousand thirty-six to two thousand twenty-nine. The one out on DuBois is two thousand fifty, and the one in Shoshone will be closed next year. And that's when that large amount of money that the solid waste district has, right now it's roughly sixteen million dollars, but when you put a dump to bed, costs you to put it to bed, but that's not the real cost. It's perpetually monitoring that so that it's not leaching into the groundwater, it's not getting out into the atmosphere, it's not, it's a engineer's dream for future revenues coming in. If we had many of those, we would be all wealthy. But that's what we're paying eighty-five dollars a ton for going to Lander right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Appreciate your efforts there. Corey?
Mayor, I've got a couple things. So to start, I wasn't able to attend the Festival of Trees, but I was able to attend the tree lighting that was held downtown, part of which they blocked the roads off for. I think it went off pretty successful. We had, I would bet a hundred, a hundred people at least. And a big thank you to the depot who had their people out bringing everybody hot chocolate all night. So that was super fantastic. During the Community Engagement Committee, we had David Huel attend. He has a Facebook page. It's called Fremont County Take Our Streets Back. With a little discussion, what we've decided to do is right now, we're putting together a test area. We've got a group of people, but we're going to start a neighborhood watch. We're going to see how it goes over in this area, and hopefully we will expand it in the future. I would assume we see that starting in January. We also have the rendezvous games, which will be February first. So the rendezvous games date has been set. It is February first. With the Fremont County School District Recreation Board, the kicking trash group was awarded the Volunteer Group of the Year. There's another gentleman who is the Volunteer of the Year, but he wasn't able to attend. I don't want to spoil it. I'm sure he already knows. Let's see. Friday, the skating rink is also going to be open. I'm not sure if it'll be open before that, but I do know Friday at seven o'clock, they plan on having the skate rink open. That's in the Tonkin Bowl there. And then last but not least, we had our Boys and Girls Club Advisory Board meeting. It's not set in stone, but it looks like Boys and Girls Club should be kicking off in River not set in stone, but it looks like Boys and Girls Club should be kicking off in Riverton fall of 2020, so fingers crossed that that goes through, but that is in the works right now. With that being said, that is all I have right now, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Now, this is usually where I jump you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Since the airport, as Councilman Bailey pointed out, the Airport Board meeting is this Friday at 8:00 a.m. at City Hall. Speaking with the individuals with the Veterans Park, we know that there was some vandalism there, and that they've been doing some fundraising, had a little bit of a conversation, and tentatively, and I wanna point out, tentatively, they're looking at a rededication in April, it's looking about April 18th is what, is what they're shooting for right now, of the Veterans Park, so wanted to get that on everybody's radar, we're really happy to be working with them, and to that effect, we're actually working with them on the development of the security system that is gonna be part of that rededication, that's gonna try to make sure that stuff like this doesn't happen again, and if it does, we have a much better eye on it and the ability to prosecute it, we're appreciative of their work, and they're working with us, they've been really great. Being it's the holiday season, I would, I would like to make sure everybody knows and kind of tell the public that we are closed on the 24th at noon, and on the 25th, all day, on the 25th. We're also, city offices will be closed on December 31st at noon, and then all day on January 1st. However, we will be here in the mornings on those two days. If there's anything anybody needs, I'm sure we can, we'll try to accommodate them as best we can. We are advertising for vacancies on our boards, and we would encourage the public to take a look at that, you can see it through our Facebook page, you can call our offices, call me, call anybody, we'll get you those lists, there's a lot of opportunities to serve, and these boards do a lot of really good things, so we would encourage any applications to that extent, if anybody wants to get involved and see what goes on, Tree Board, Community Engagement has a spot, I'm trying to think what else, Airport Board, and Force Committee all have boards, and they all do great work, and they're great people to work with, so.
Planning Commission?
Planning Commission. So, so we have a lot of board openings, and that's, it's a really great opportunity to serve, and to understand exactly how our organization works, so, we encourage that. As a point of clarification from our discussion earlier, third reading on flags, we denoted it is on the 7th, that was a, that was one of those heavy business meetings, we had been discussing it for the 21st, is, if that's okay, we'll keep it on the 21st.
That's great.
The, we're continuing to work on the 56 permit counts, so if anybody has deer that they see on the roadway, up against the roadway, we'd like to know where those are, please, feel free to give us an email, give us a call, give me a text, we just keep that data, so we make sure that we can track that appropriately.
Twelve on Broadway today.
How many?
Twelve.
Twelve.
One, two, on Broadway.
Okay.
At about one, no, it was about 12:010, somewhere in there.
Okay. The, with the Holiday Festival that was talked about, and the tree lighting, had some really great things going on, I mean, it was, had a little parade, that was a lot of fun, my truck still looks like Rudolph, has a big red nose on it, so, probably have to fix that at some point, but my wife likes it. I wanted to tell everybody a little story and talk, it's a little bit about, it's a little fun, it's a little bit about dedication, as you know, our crews put the lights on that tree, and we're very appreciative, they did it last year, they did it again this year. And while up, the individual that was up in the bucket, the bucket decided it was cold and it didn't wanna go down, and we're appreciative now of the Fire Department also for helping us to get our people down. Obviously, nobody was hurt, and everybody, it's amazing, Kyle and I happened to be coming from another meeting as we drove by and saw fire trucks and everything, and we just said, I don't know if we wanna know, and right then, he got a phone call that told him exactly what it was, so, we're really appreciative of our staff for getting stuck in the bucket, but also for all the good work they did in doing the downtown, it's very much appreciated, and for the Fire Department for helping us get everybody home safe, thank you to them for that, and for the good humor of everybody involved.
As always, dress warm when you get in a bucket.
And that is true. Your Honor, with that, this being the last of the meetings this year, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tony. I need to go backwards just a little bit, Cory, you mentioned that Neighborhood Watch?
Yes, sir.
And I maybe got the card in front of the horse, would you make sure that the Chiefs kept abreast of all of the stuff, the, that committee moves pretty quick, and you can get run over, so, be on your feet, Chief. If that, if that would happen, and then, the Chief, the Chief said he could kind of help us with some of that, too, that we, as we plan that up and get that to where that might work, so, let's make sure the Chiefs anchored that, so. Seems like there's something else on the Veterans Park, but me, I'd like to thank you for my Kit Kat, a sweet spot will help me a bunch. I had an interesting thing happen to me, the, the Riverton Hospital Committee is, is gone, but they asked me to, as you know, recently, the city hospitals, and Lander Hospital was sold a group, and there were 10 hospitals, and so, that were in that group, and so they asked me to call the mayors, if I would, and talk to the mayors about any problems that they've been having, and so I did that, and today, I only had two of them return calls to me so far, but the gentleman from, from Kansas, he, we were talking about the hospitals, and then, then he, I said, well, we went through a lot of other things in the community, and then I mentioned the airport, and they're in the exact same process of bringing SkyWest on, and they're really excited about it, and I thought that was kind of interesting, that SkyWest is, as large as it is, is picking up another community, just the same way that we're getting in the group, so. Some of the other things that I would like to talk about tonight is the staff meetings, I'm fortunate enough to be able to go to staff meetings, and since we met last, the two staff meetings that we, we held, I really do appreciate the staff and, and their kindness on, on how we accomplish things, and I realize that lots of times, I get stuff, and, and, you know, I maybe expect too much out of them, but I really do appreciate staff and how quickly they move and, and accomplish the goals that, that we have there, so, I'd like to thank them for that. The Holiday Festival was a, was a triumph, and really well done, and I would appreciate everybody knowing that there are a lot of hard work going into that, Cameron Ferring was the chair on that, but there was a lot of work put together, and hopefully, that'll grow and grow for us. I also had the opportunity to meet with two of the Planning Commission panel group, and Eric, and we had a good discussion, and, and we want all of our people that are on our committees to feel like they have access to us, and, and what, what they feel, we wanna know, and so we appreciate that effort. Tony went with me to the Good Sam's meeting at their, at their center, so did, Carla was there, I was a little bit surprised, even the Chairman's opening statement put me a little bit back, because she suggested that the, the meeting might get out of order, and if it did, we were gonna shut it down, and I was looking for the Chief to see, you know, where, where is this going? But everybody in the room was very sympathetic, Brad Tindall, the college president, came and spoke very elegantly also, and, and so I, I feel, you know, I'd like to thank that board, they've been in place for, one of them for 22 years, had worked on that board, and so, there's a lot of effort put into there, and, and if a 501(c)(3) is out there that has the thought to get into that, their assets are available, and, and we would encourage and help any way we can to, to make something like that happen again. There's only four of those shelters in the state of Wyoming, and so, it's not like they're really common, and they're not everywhere, and so, they are hard to keep open, and the assets have aged to the point where it's just really tough to, to get those to the point that they can keep them open, but I would like to commend all of those people that, that are involved with that. I also got the opportunity to speak to the leadership Fremont County, that Eric got me, even had to call me and say, you know, it's now, and could you hurry up, and, and so, but a wonderful group, and I think, I think that's commendable, because if we're not replacing, if we're not training our replacements, we're failing, and I think that really is a great idea, and I commend you for that. The city also held its award Christmas slash Christmas party, Councilman Hancock and I were there, I appreciated his attendance, it was nice to see the turnout, the food was wonderful, lots and lots of great employees that the city has, so, I'd like them to know that we really do appreciate them and for their hard work. I also got the opportunity to, to speak at the graduation at Job Corps, and, you know, they, they presented that, that there'd only be 23 students, and so I thought of this small group, and before it was done, the gymnasium was full, and, and it was a really wonderful opportunity to think of back when Mayor Wartness and I got the opportunity to fly back and beg for money, to what, what really is there, you know, 34, 35 million dollars later, what a wonderful opportunity, and to speak to those, those graduates was a lot of fun. I've had a meeting this week with the Riverton Memorial Hospital District, and they're, they're the ones that asked me to speak to those mayors, it's kind of fun, because there's four of those hospitals in Pennsylvania, and then four other locations, but the problems are very similar to what we're encountering right here in Riverton. I would like to also, again, tonight, if you saw the lead article in the paper, I'd like to thank Pat LeBrun for his efforts and his, his willingness to be forthright with the information on the, on the shooting at Walmart, that's, he's put himself out there, and I appreciate his transparency, so, I would like him to know that in his office, and Tim, of course, works in that office, and their willingness to do what needs to be done. As I read through the, the weekly report, the city has moved 30 cubic, 30,000 cubic yards of snow. That's a lot of snow, and if you look around town where it's stacked, that's, that's a lot of snow, and so, those guys are working late hours, and Kyle's brought that up, and that's just a lot of snow, and, and I really do appreciate it, federal's becoming more open, and we're able to get up and down federal easier, and they're, they're working really hard, I think they've got till the 20th to, to get that concrete poured before liquidating damages come in. They've got Bailey's entrances in, and they've got one of Southern's in, and one of Burger King's, so they got another one to go on both of those businesses, and I really am pleased with the effort that they're putting in there, that's not easy work at these temperatures, and the cost of that. The other thing that strikes me, and I think something that we need to take care of, and maybe Tim or Mia, you know, when you read the report on the, on the courts, and again, we're at over a million dollars of non-paid fines, what we could do with that million dollars would be spectacular, but we just aren't gonna get it, and so maybe we could look at streamlining that and catch that up, so the girls don't have to just, I don't know how far back those court cases go, and, and, you know, maybe we need Tim's help to tell us what we can do or can't do there, but we oughta, we oughta try to alleviate that constant, I believe we're around 6,000 open cases, isn't that correct?
6,527.
Yeah.
I just was looking at it right now.
And so, that, that's just a lot of work, and, and we handle that, our court, the girls that work in that court side of, of the office are amazing what they get done, and so, our judge is, is amazing, and, and if we could streamline that, I would, I would ask if we could try to target that and get some ideas that would work to make that happen. Other than that, I would like to wish you Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, it's a pleasure to work with you, a pleasure to work with staff. I can't think of anything else, unless there's an objection, we'll stand adjourned at 8:34.